Hi Dahlia.
Hi Frank, hi everyone.
Does your sound on?
What did you say?
She said hi everybody.
I said hi Frank, hi everyone.
I was just testing, I was just testing.
Oh.
Anyone? So we officially start at 7:01. I like to call the regular, the regular meeting of the Bogota Board of Education for Tuesday 2021. Please stand for the flag for 2024. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record, filed with the clerk of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website or file.
Mrs. Alcalde?
Present.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Present.
Mr. Alvarez?
Present.
Mr. Chavez?
Present.
Mrs. Cruz?
Present.
Mr. Navarro?
Present.
Mrs. Olivo?
Present.
Ms. Ruckett?
Present.
Mr. Miranda?
Present.
We are, we have a court.
All right, I'd like to open the floor to hearing of the citizens on agenda items only. Do you have a motion to move?
A motion.
Mrs. Chavez, Mrs. Ruckett for a second. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any member, please state your name. You have five minutes. Do you have a motion to close?
Motion.
Hearing of citizens, do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ruckett again. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to 3:1 of the agenda superintendent's report.
All right, first up, we have no HIVs to report since our last meeting. Teacher of the year were selected for each building. I'm excited to announce this year's winners for the 23-24 school year. In the high school, Ms. Diane Baranello. In the middle school, Ms. Lauren Tomlinson. In Bixby, Ms. Melissa Dusher. And in Steen, Ms. Maria Castillo. So congratulations to them, they were selected by the committee for school. They will be attending the teacher of the year luncheon on Thursday with all Bergen County. So that'll be a great day. Also, great job by our high school and middle school music department. They put on a great concert on Thursday and then this past Monday. Great job by our students, but also again, great job by our teachers helping put that together. And finally, on Friday at 1:15, 1:30 at Feigl Field, we will be doing our DUI simulation. This is a pretty big production put together with a lot of Bergen County, different organizations. So I attended a few meetings, but we're all set. So our sophomores, our juniors, and our seniors will be going to that. This year, we opened it up to our sophomores. I'm feeling the kids are getting in cars. We do it every two years, so instead of pushing it off until their senior year, the current sophomores, we rather give it to them now and then they can see it again as a senior. It might hit a little differently, but just to let everyone see, you know, what can happen if, if we're not being smart behind the wheel. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, moving on to, well, just before I go on, the, the band musical that occurred here last week was, was wonderful. I was glad to be invited, thank you to everyone who showed up. Uh, you know, we, our staff works really hard. Our children put in a lot of work. Uh, you know, they were, some of them were dressed up in costumes to act as a character. Uh, my son himself had a, a part for the rapping in the Heights. So if anyone has watched that, uh, it was very nice. Uh, these kids, we have a serious band. I mean, I've watched them around different schools and, um, this is a really good band. They do an amazing job. They really are so synchronized. To that point, you know, sometimes you wonder, you know, we're all busy, we have schedules, but to know that we can have members up here that attend other functions that are not for the Board of Education and more town functions, you know, or meetings and not attend one of the events in the schools, just know that the staff works really hard and the children work even harder. So it was, it was really nice, it was really nice and, and I just hope you see more of that. Uh, it was really, they really did a good job. I was very surprised. And it's like going to a miniature style Broadway, they really do a good job. The music is on point and, and the instruments are on point. You don't see hiccups, you don't see trips and falls. I mean, the, when you look at, I, I, as I saw a few of them and some seniors, I said, I hope there's a career in, and I know there is backstage shifting planes because they do it, they move these chairs in a blink of an eye and no one falls. The instruments don't go, so it's just a beautiful thing and kudos to them. I, I did want to announce today, I got really good news. We have, you're all gonna know your dates, your graduations, right? I think it's 12, 13, 14. Uh, we're gonna have a guest speaker who's the president and COO for Sarah Shopwright's. Uh, you know, one of the missions up here we have is to drive a true message in our high school and our district and our children. Uh, in Bergen County, make a lot of noise as far as we mean business. And in order to mean business, you have to bring in experts and people who, who are from, who were raised in similar communities. We've all, we've always spoken up here, whether, uh, you know, the diversity, et cetera, and the resemblance of our community. Well, this is not necessarily the resemblance of our community, but it can be, it's an individual who was born and raised in New Jersey and went on to Great Heights in Wakeford Shopwright, which if you know, it's one of the largest employers of New Jersey. It's a powerhouse retail supermarket business around the country and faces up against the three and the fours. So to have a powerhouse come here and he'll say humbly, I'm not a powerhouse. I wrote a book. Uh, and he's gonna, you know, sign some books for some of our seniors and, you know, so they can read it. And the book, uh, I'll get the name next time, has an interesting statement and, and it has an interesting title and it really is swim against the wave or the tide or something of that sort, which is what we all do here, we've all come from that background. What we've had to do to reach these ultimate goals. Uh, so, so it's gonna be an interesting, I hope he gives the best speech. We've never had a business person with that kind of latitude in, in his profession in our district to come speak at our thing. And I can only hope whether I'm here or not, that that becomes a new tradition. I want to get more powerhouses here. And when Kennedy brought that idea to me, I said, who do you want? Stu Leonard's? Who do you want? Who do you want, right? Because if you have access and you have resources, we use it. That's the point of this. We use those resources to try to empower our children. Um, and one thing, when I spoke to him today, it was very interesting. He said, you know, some of these kids are graduating and they said, this is the end of my career. They haven't even started, have no clue where they're going. Some have faith, some are just confused. And he was hoping to deliver a message that it's okay not to know, but you gotta figure it out, right? So I think that's some of the things. Uh, we, it actually rolled into other conversations. I think Kennedy is gonna like, one day we spoke about the CTE building, Career Technical Building. He said, I haven't heard one in public schools in Bergen. Is there one? So I gotta check if there is one because I know, I know like the academies have it, the techs, but I've never heard of a public school and neither did he. So, so, you know, I was able to give him five minutes because that's usually what they spare of some of the great advancements we made here. I even went as far as saying, maybe you should, uh, look to stamp in Sarah Shopwright our football field and give us an annual fund. Cause if you don't ask, you don't get, right? Who's to say we're gonna get that football field if we didn't ask our residents?
The worst they could say is no, right?
Yeah, that's the worst. But actually I heard, you know, they actually give out, so, so all I'm saying is, uh, we're bringing substance to Bogota by way of the school district. Uh, and the partnering has been a blessing. I also want to say for the record that tonight, we may be voting or not voting on the bid, approving the bid. I would say that, well, I guess you never know until the roll call happens. But I do want to thank the council. You know, there's, there's been such a divide over the years and I think anyone takes the credit. I'm the big credit is given what credit is due. Uh, I want to thank Lisa Coles for driving that. Uh, you know, we spoke a few times and just what needed to transpire. Uh, because you know, our lawyer did an excellent job in like looking at the, looking at the wording in the, in the bid and making sure that we got it in our hands quickly. You know, one of the things I kept asking and the residents are asking me and other people and social media is when are we gonna break ground? When are we gonna break ground? When we're gonna break ground? Some other clowns, did I say that? I'm sorry, some other folks, uh, they tend to ask, uh, yeah, they said they were gonna break ground. So I just want to reiterate what, what it goes to. We have to go through a due process. If we could just get the permits of Bogota, I'm sure that Bogota will give us permits. But we have to go to the DP, we file the documents, we file the paperwork and we're wonder, and you know, we have to wait on that. And one of the last pieces was the inter-local agreement. And, and I think it passed favorably, I wasn't there because I was at the plate. Um, but I think it passed favorably. Uh, I think we all want the same thing. And just so you know, you know, we are paying attention. Uh, I, I do want to know at some point about these willow trees. What is that base we talked about? Just make sure as a board, we're paying attention, we're listening as much as we can, but we're, we're out to do parks and that's what we're doing. And on Sunday, I had the real pleasantry of speaking to a resident who actually lives in front of the football, the field. And they asked a few questions that I thought were, you know, real good questions. And what I've learned from like engineers and things is like if you flooded three and a half feet above ground and you went up six and a half feet, then what did you see? You see six and a half feet of dirt. So it's all supposed to dissipate, go way down and, and hold it and work its way out. And so they asked us these questions and you know, it's hard because we're not engineers, but you get the bits and pieces we get and we, we've drilled them. I'm sure, you know, I've seen you all asking these questions and, and we've gotten those answers. One of the things she said was, when I moved to Bogota in front of the field, I knew exactly that I was going into a front of a field. I knew I would hear bands. I knew that I would hear football games. I knew that it can cause traffic. I knew all of this, but that was what I wanted for my child. And she said, I also know that at one day it was gonna blossom, it'll be something different than what I see today. So that gave me a lot of comfort, right? Because I think we've been challenged with those questions and those ideas. We've all spoken to each other and say, what happens to the poor people that live right across the street? How do we make sure? How do we not know it's a hundred percent when they tell us it's ninety? Uh, but to hear that, a, and you know, we need parks and we need nice fields. So that was a good thing. It was just, it's good and I wanted you to hear it because sometimes we often ask each other all these questions and we challenge it, but to know that there are some residents who actually live right across the street that think that it's a nice thing we're doing, all right? So, you know, not everything is perfect, you can't appease everybody, but I think we're doing for the larger scale of things, we're doing a good thing, we're doing a good thing. So keep it going, guys, keep it going. I'm gonna move on to the 4 dot 4, approval of April, of the April minutes for April 23rd and closed work, closed work action minutes, April 30th, open regular minutes. Is there a motion approval for, for? That was who? Chavez?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Second Trina Olivo. Any board discussion? Roll call, fun.
Mr. Salcalde?
I have to abstain from April 30th because I wasn't here, but yes, as to the other minutes.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Uh, I also have to abstain for April 30th, but yes, to be, uh, 4-2.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
There's no policy section tonight. 6-7 educational section, which is the approval of item 6-1 through 6-6. Do I have a motion to move 6-7?
Motion.
Ruckett, do I have a second?
Second.
Navarro, any board discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Salcalde?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo? Mrs. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do I have motion, uh, I'm moving resolution 613?
We did that.
No, I did, why does it say? No, we did the first one because this is the approval of agenda items 6-8 through 6-12. Do you have a motion to move 613?
Motion.
Mrs. Cruz, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ruckett, any board discussion? Her fine.
Mrs. Salcalde?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do you have a motion to move, uh, 7-9 Personnel Section, approval of agenda items 7-1 through 7-8? Do I have a motion to approve 7-9?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Cruz, any board discussion? Her fine.
Mrs. Salcalde?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the finance section of the approval of agenda items 8-1 through 8-18. Do I have a motion to approve 8-19?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second? Alvarez? Alvarez, any board discussion? Roll call, her fine.
Mrs. Salcalde?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, moving on to 8-22, resolution, uh, 8-22, which holds agendas items 8-23, 8-21. Do I have a motion to move 8-22? Motion. Chavez, any second?
Second Navarro.
Navarro, any board discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Salcalde?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo? Mrs. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
There's no buildings and grounds, that's shocking. Uh, committee reports, do I have any committee reports? Nothing? So I'll, I'll brief you on a committee report. Uh, last, last week, Kennedy's, police department? Two weeks. Two weeks ago, we met with the chief of police, Detective Liriano, Lieutenant, they just got promoted, so I gotta remember, Lieutenant.
Charles.
Sorry, Captain Liriano, Lieutenant Cole and, uh, our business administrator at the borough, myself, Kennedy. Uh, and we were going over just some of the safety things we need to do up here. Uh, we, we gave them the good news that we'll be installing vestibules. They call it mantraps. Uh, and how we're gonna improve the safety and entryways in the schools that, that needed. Uh, we, we elaborated a lot on the, the report that we got our own traffic study. If you recall a few months back, we went over that report. Uh, we've spoken, we went over one-way traffic during school hours to do a trial in Bixby. We spoke furthermore about needing an extra, uh, crossing guard down on Main and Orchard. So we hashed out a lot of things. And I will say we have a very wide difference of opinions between what safety is called and what the day-to-day duties are. So there's a lot. Uh, we're trying to channel and dig through all of that to find the most beneficial ways. Uh, and I guess appropriate understanding of what each person can get done in order to improve the safety in and around our schools. Because a lot of people focus on the inside, but that perimeter of the school is where most things can happen. Uh, I mean, I really, you know, one of the things that was driven in messaging to me is that the parents, the parents, the parents don't listen. They don't even listen to you, the parents, the parents. That's not something that I swallow lightly because I'm a parent, I listen. And I'm a parent and I've also made mistakes. Uh, you know, not to throw anyone to the bus, but I've made the wrong left turn. I, I know, you, you're kind of in the morning, you're in it, right? But we all, would I have been stopped? I would have had to receive what I deserve. And, and I just want to say that on the record that we're paying, we're keeping a very close eye on that stuff. All right? Uh, but that was all, I, we're trying to solve a lot of scenarios or, or things that could happen. Uh, moving on to old business, there any old business? New business, none? Open up the floor to hearing of citizens?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
On Friday, the 7th, we, the eighth grade actually had their first Washington DC trip, which is the first out-of-state trip.
Solid picture.
It was an amazing trip. I can tell you, I was extremely proud of our kids. They were very, very on top of their game. They were, they were on point, we had no issues. Um, and I would like to commend also the staff. We have an amazing staff of educators. Uh, Mrs. Pontagnius, um, Mrs. Adam, Mr. Chensky, Mr. Talati, Mrs. Van Tine. They did an amazing job. Um, we walked a lot. I am still tired, but we had a blast. The kids were extremely happy. Um, I would do it again if I had. It was a great thing and I would like to keep it going for the eighth grade and maybe even for other grades. It was an amazing trip and I want to thank everyone that was involved.
Thank you. I'm glad you said that. The other thing that was approved that Borough Hall was probably, I don't know if it was the first, the first of my time, but a boot drive. We're gonna do a boot drive. I'm gonna take part in it. I, I, I hope that you all take a part in it.
Of course.
Um, there was some concerns about kids and I do have to hash out about insurance and coverage and things of that nature. Uh, you know, Dr. Lash is taking in, uh, you know, his new AD role and he's looking to fundraise money. Um, he was part of the driver of that, that eighth grade trip. So that's why it prompted me.
A lot of thanks.
So thank you, thank you for, to the Borough Hall for doing that boot drive. I, I mean, a lot of people ask questions, but I go to Ridgewood and stuff and I see a bunch of kids doing boot drives for different sports or different things. I'm not sure if that's a parent thing or what it is, but they do it and they're in the middle of the roads. So I think we just gotta get a lot of cones out, get safety nests on and go forward and try and collect a lot of money from our staff and not, I mean, from our parents. They're not coming here, so we might as well, I can't ask 20 parents, it'd be 20 bucks for the border, you know, for the stuff, but it's a nice thing that it's follow-through. Um, I also heard that a resident from Bogota donated $8,000. So I won't name him unless I can find, you know, until I figure it out, but it's a great thing. Uh, there were some other funds, so there's been planning and action. One of the things I wanted to bring to life here and I saw at some point is every quarter, every school has a kid with their principal that comes up in front of the board, gives us just a quick breakdown of the nice things they're seeing and, and what they're hoping for. Because we make a lot of decisions up here and we tend to make decisions because of the residents and the taxpayers. But our biggest goal is children. And it would be nice, maybe next year, we try to practice this where, where every quarter or every month or whatever, you get one child from each school representative. And it, it, it does a lot of things for that child. That child becomes a speaker of a group. It becomes very vocal, we know this is vocal America. So we become very vocal and, and I think it would be something nice for us to see. And, and, and I know as you, as all these rah-rah parents that you are, and when you're not a parent, you're still rah-rah like Rob Alvarez. You know? It's just a nice thing and I think we should bring that, we should start implementing something. And, and it's just a nice thing. And, and I just, I don't think we have another meeting, but I do want to congratulate all our, all our graduates. I want to congratulate all of those going to college, all the ones going to technical schools. And I still want to congratulate the ones who don't even know where they're going yet. But I hope, take, 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 I call it a sabbatical, but take, take your break for a year, get back at it and, and find, do what you gotta do to excel in life. Um, I'm impressed when you walk down at the entrance, all the acceptances. You have some kids accepted in seven colleges. Today I learned that someone got two scholarships to Mammoth College, Mammoth University? Mammoth, they had one scholarship, they showed up and then they got a football scholarship and they didn't even know about it. And the parents said, I couldn't stop crying. So, so you know, we don't hear these things. We don't hear what's happening. So it would be nice to somehow get that representation so we can get going. Uh, I, I, I want to stress to the board, I was up here listening to the PTO for a very brief, Mrs. Cruz, and there was a lot about how the trips and stuff. And I'm really eager to see how, to see how, what we're gonna do to make these uh, seniors happy moving forward, whether it's a local trip, whether it's a real deal barbecue, what are we gonna do? And Trina said something very important because she was there, she had to be there. She said, I just want to hear what is it that they want? And you may not get everything in your wish list, but I'm sure we can drum something up. And that's the right attitude. You may not get everything you, you want, but we're gonna give you something you deserve. And we're gonna try to meet you there. And I truly hope that moving forward, that's the attitude of anyone here. But in order to have that, you gotta be part of the boot drives, you gotta show up to the events, you gotta go to as many things as possible so that people could drum up. Because what I've recognized is residents like to see us. And when they do, they get closer to the school. Because we obviously get up here because of a group of residents. So if we could drum them up, it'll help, all right?
Before we move on, make sure that we point out a special congratulations to those who graduated from Bergen County community.
That's right, that's right. We had how many of your associate's degree? I saw that.
We will be recognizing them in June. Uh, four of them graduated.
You, you know what's a very good feeling? Social media helps. You're, I'm starting to see people that graduated my first year round, graduating out of college. It's like, oh, I gave you a diploma, that is beautiful. Watch it, Idalia, you probably see a whole bunch, they're probably coming back to your house at this point. You see a lot of the kids graduating and that's phenomenal to get that feeling. All right, but I'm gonna close it, you know, because I was truly not trying to beat BC's time. We're, uh, hearing of the public, am I opening that up? 13-1, do I have a motion to move?
Alvarez? Alvarez?
So that was Mr. Alvarez and Mrs. Rocket for a second. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any member of the public, please state your name. You have five minutes on absolutely anything. Do we have anyone?
Susan Harper.
Thank you so much. Um, and I wanna commend everybody for the excellent work that everybody's doing. I also wanted to just commend uh the superintendent for mentioning the DUI um program that's gonna be happening. I um, I hope that given the fact that. That horrible tragic accident occurred um to the Teaneck resident by one of our youngsters in Bogota. Um, that it will be truly underscored the use of drugs as well as alcohol, um, especially hot. Because the fact, I think that uh many kids don't necessarily think about the dangers while driving. Um, so thank you again. Um, I I wanted to just turn to the park for a second because of course I'm someone who lives across the street from the park. And um, the project that you're working on does have a consequence on my home as well as the homes of the neighbors. Um, as I am aware from just the plans, that there are many different trees that are slated to be removed. Um, and some of you may not be fully aware of the benefits of of many of these large trees from. The much-needed shade in the warm days. Um, if you watch any baseball game, happening or soccer game. Parents are always sitting under these trees to get protection from the um, from the elements and from the sun. Um, from particles from the cement factory adjacent to the Olson Park. Pollution from the significant increase in traffic from Bogota and Hackensack's new building residence. The trucks that are expected to operate twenty-four hour seven. Due to that, I don't even know if it's an Amazon factory or whatever factory is being built adjacent to the rail uh railroad in Bogota. And the large trees also help with the light pollution from Bogota's new apartment complex neighboring Hackensack. As well as provide much-needed shade uh to the roads and our home reducing heating and cooling costs and taxpayer repairs to the road. Uh, the large trees also observe the rainfall in the park when basins overflow or may overflow is the case. Even even if you are um updating and making uh changes to do that. Uh, given the fact of this bizarre climate change um area that we're in, these large trees suck up a lot of that water. And finally, the trees are really beautiful, um, providing the park visitors an opportunity to be one with nature. Um, there's a wide range of positive evidence that shows that trees boost happiness, immunity. Um, heal, increase ability to focus even in children with ADHD. Accelerate recovery from illness or surgery, increase energy levels and even improve sleep. And when there are no large trees like this, the opposite can occur. So I want everybody and I would really appreciate everybody to really be thinking about the fact of the impact of this decision. Uh, there, when I came to Bogota and lived in my house, about seventy or ninety trees. Um, it will be about now seventy to ninety trees that would be cut down, if all these trees are cut down, basically all of them. Around this baseball field. Um, and finally, I wanna leave you with with one uh last question. Based upon uh the uh tree specialist report, and I think that one needs to be asking yourself. Why are there so many trees slated to be removed? I think you need to be asking yourself, because right across the street, when a report was done across the street, only about two trees were. So what is it about what's going on in this park that something could potentially be happening? You need to ask yourself the question because now that you have a responsibility and duty um beyond the football field. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Harper. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to close hearings of the citizen? Chavez, do I have a second?
Alvarez.
Alvarez, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have no closed session this evening, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Alvarez.
Alvarez.
Chavez.
Chavez. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.